Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Planning and Zoning Board Meeting for November 26, 2024. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Planning and Zoning Board Meeting for November 26, 2024. The first evening.
Wow.
Okay, we're back.
You sounded great, David.
Yeah, now we know what I sound like. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda for November 26, 2024.
I'll second it.
Having a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number two is approval of the minutes from October 22. Does anybody see any problems there, anything we need to update?
No, Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the minutes from the last month's meeting as printed.
Second.
Having that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And next, we have to look at conditional CUP 24-03. Staff.
Okay, this is a conditional use permit at the request of the applicant Nextech Wireless on an agricultural property with a residence on it. They're proposing a 250-foot telecommunications tower. The surrounding zoning would be ag, all ag. You have on to the north, you have residential use and as well as to the south, east, and west, you have cropland. The applicant is proposing a self-supporting communications tower. Tower will be located on a leased space of .1 acres approximately. Based on the current location, tower will be approximately, and like I say, 150 feet from the south property line, but I think that that was just something I was reading in error. Okay, okay. Tower must be a minimum of 250 feet from the south property line. Tower is not located within the airport buffer zone. Applicant has submitted a site plan. There is one existing tower located within a mile of the proposed location. However, co-location and business decisions cannot be considered as a basis of your decision. Final FAA and FCC approval documentation must be submitted. Property is in the floodplain and may require additional approval from the DWR. Public comments, staff has received concerns from the public regarding the aesthetic appearance of the surrounding area that this tower may have. Comments from other departments, no other comments or agencies have submitted any comment. Under the review criteria that I gave you, the three points, basically currently the zoning regulations state that the commission may consider the effect of facility of the facility on the character of the neighborhood and other public health, safety, and welfare problems. However, due to the subjective nature of aesthetic character, more specific guidelines in our regulations is needed. Such guidance would require findings of verifiable evidence to override the precedent that's already been in place in this area. Furthermore, the commission may not consider anything that would prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of personal wireless services as stated in 704A of the Federal Telecommunications Act. Item number two is the same consideration as to one above. The commission can only consider those items that it is expressly directed to consider under the zoning regulations, namely setback, fall zone compliance, and compliance with floodplain regulations. And item three is the quality of service. Would be considered a technical aspect and not really allowed for consideration of the proposed use per our zoning regulations, and I would also note the Telecommunications Act as well. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with the following conditions, that the building permit will not be issued until a commercial permit review has been completed. Floodplain development permit application must be completed, verifying all electrical equipment is elevated two feet above the base flood elevation as determined by a licensed Kansas engineer. Any DWR fill permits for this project must be submitted to staff. A statement from a licensed Kansas engineer verifying the structural design meets the requirements of the building codes and fall zone requirements. All FAA and FCC approvals must be submitted to staff prior to a building permit approval. Alternatives would be to approve the request with conditions as listed above or conditionally approve the request with other conditions as the commission may deem necessary, and the applicant is here. And if you have any questions for him.
Let's hear from the applicant first.
Hello, my name is Creighton Remus with Nextech Wireless, a cell phone company based out of Hayes, Kansas. We're looking at putting that 250-foot self-support tower just off of I-70 there in the proposed location that was provided. I did bring along, right now we've got nine cell sites in the city of Salina, and with capacity and coverage, I brought a feasibility report that shows the data connections and all the voice calls that these sites are having. And so, right now, we're looking at just needing another site out there for capacity and coverage issues to link in with all our other sites that we currently have. And that's the main thing. It's a, and I know for aesthetics purposes, it is a 250-foot self-supporting tower, and we surveyed it all out. It's all off of the fall zone, and we did tuck it back in the trees, kind of further at the back part of the property, just so, you know, it does help with that, you know. So one side of the tower is actually going to be, have trees blocking it. And as far as FAA, FCC, FAA's done, FCC has all been completed, the NEPA Phase 1 surveys, environmental work, everything has been completed and approved governmental-wise, you know. So we're just mainly down to the zoning now portion on this. So I don't know if you guys got any questions about the towers or anything like that, and I can give this feasibility report maybe to Tam or whoever. You know, if you guys do have questions about it, you can look, and it's what that is, it shows the RF coverage without the tower and then with the tower. So that's what that is.
Would you all want me to pass this around, or are you okay?
I mean, it's kind of.
Yeah, sure. I don't need it, no, I'm good.
But does anybody have, I mean.
Just one question.
Sure.
Sounded like it was clarified, but the setback is 250.
Yeah, yeah, we do have it surveyed on here, and I guess I can show you right here. We always make sure every one of our towers, it is a 250-foot tower, so that circle around there. When we survey it, we make sure that the property lines and everything, the fall zone, pretty much every county requires it, so it's just one of our staples when building a tower, we just do the setback no matter what, so.
What about the floodplain development permit?
So, yeah, all we'll do on that, if the zoning, we couldn't really do anything until we found out from zoning, but what we'll do, we'll go and do a floodplain, and we do build whatever the height is, we have, there are just a graded platform that we elevate up to the required height, yeah. And it's, we've had to do it on a few sites, not a lot, but anytime in the flood zone, yeah, that's one thing we do, we do do.
And any cabinets you have with electrical have to be elevated to two feet above.
Correct, yep, correct, yeah. And the cabinets for these, you know, we used to have buildings and all that stuff, now they got all the fancy cabinets. It's like a small refrigerator, little bigger than a college refrigerator, but it has the heat, air conditioning, everything in that one cabinet, and it will just set on top that platform. So no, no building, nothing on the ground.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
This time we'll open to the public and see if there's any questions there.
Norman, I'm in Salina. That floodplain issue concerns me. One-tenth of an acre, that ain't very big. An acre foot of water, that's only 385,000 gallons, divide that by 12, and an acre's only 219 square. You'd need more elevation on that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing nothing else, we will close that to the public, and I'll entertain motions unless we have any other discussion here. Don't look at me like that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve CUP 24-03 with the recommendations made by, the conditions made by Mr. Hamilton.
Mr. Chairman, for now, we'll second that.
Okay, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 This is Dr. Freeman on Zoom calling. A vote aye.
Okay, all opposed? It was passed unanimously. And we'll move on to the next, CUP 24-04. Staff.
Okay, this is a request for approval of an accessory or temporary residence to be inhabited for the care of a family member. This is then at the request of Mike Becker. The, it's a 14.1-acre parcel generally located at 12184 South Gypson Valley Road. In accordance with the Saline County zoning and master plan, Article 8, the applicant is asking for approval of a 12-foot by 60-foot construction trailer, model year 1999, to be used as a temporary residence for caretaker of a family member. The application meets the goals of the 2008 comprehensive plan for appropriate rural development and density. The accessory residence will be located away from the designated 1% annual chance flood zone, so there is floodplain on that property, but this structure is going to be located away from it. The separation distance between the primary residence and the secondary residence will be 50 feet. This use must meet all requirements of the Saline County Environmental Code, including separate waste systems rated at 50 gallons per day. This is per our sanitarium Seth Odette. And similar temporary residences have been allowed by the planning board in the past. The conditions for approval would be, in the event the residency status of the proposed manufactured home changes or property is sold, the temporary residence must be removed prior to property being placed on the market. No lot split is allowed due to lack of any building rights on this property. This use must meet all requirements of the Saline County Sanitarium. Staff is recommending approval of CUP 2404 according to staff findings 1 through 6 and conditions 1 through 3 above. The alternatives would be to approve the application according to staff findings and conditions, approve the application with amendment or amended findings and conditions, table or continue the application for further consideration, deny the application based on findings by the planning commission. With that, I think the applicant is here.
Yep.
And so if you have any questions for the applicant, you can.
Let's start with the applicant, then.
Come on up.
You want my name?
Please.
Yeah. Officially, Michael D. Becker. And 12184 South Gypson Valley Road, which is just short of the county line, south of Gypson.
Any clarification or anything that was not stated correctly from what staff put here?
No, I think it's right. It's my grandson and his wife is going to occupy that for assistance in our living.
Any other questions for the applicant? At, okay, that's fine. We'll open it up to see if we have any comments from the.
Anyone else?
Anyone, yeah? All right, how about any discussion for us?
I have a question to ask of Mr. Hamilton. The condition number one says, in the event the residency status of the proposed home changes, does that include the understanding that it could not be used as a rental?
That's correct.
Okay. Because I know that has happened in the past.
And I'll add to that. Mr. Hamilton, what policing do we have on this? How long is this going to last?
This is, well, I mean, like I say, unless there's a, I would say that it would be up to you all in terms of how this gets, you know, if you want me to, you know, basically do a check every year on this and make sure that there's been no status change, I can do that.
Well, the intent of this was not to have a permanent residence there.
Right.
So this is only supposed to be for a temporary timeframe. What's our temporary timeframe that we're going to establish for this?
The temporary timeframe would be in the, in the event the residency status changes, and the only way to know if that residency status changes is if I inspect it.
Otherwise, would it just be for the standard?
It would just be for the standard, yeah, just as long as they're there. And usually what we do is, if, in the event that the, the health status of the individual being taken care of changes, or if there's a situation where, you know, like I say, the caretakers now couldn't take care of the individual, you know, at some point they move or they get relocated somewhere, and the only way to really know that is if I just kind of follow up every year with them to find out if it's still, if that's still the case, if you're still valid, valid.
I think it would be wise for this situation that we have an annual review of the CUP.
Is this something we want to do as a commission, or is this something?
Yeah, what are you suggesting?
I'm suggesting that we put this in the CUP, that we have an annual review of this.
Right, as a condition.
And the conditions for approval.
One of the conditions.
Yeah.
Add it to the conditions for approval.
But an annual review as a commission or as from staff?
From staff.
Staff.
If they have more concerns, they can come back to us.
Yeah, if it, that's fine. Put it that way, then. Okay, anyone else have anything else to add? Thank you, Paul. Did I do that? I did do that. I did, we were talking about it now. Sorry. I tried to include the public.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve CUP 24-04 with the conditions put forth by staff plus the additional condition just voiced.
I second that.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This is Dawn, aye.
Any, any, all those opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. And next on the agenda is the resolution for text 24-01.
Okay, I think that as part of the, just before we get started, I think Paul had some additional discussion regarding the size of the lot for these types of uses, so I didn't know if, Paul, you wanted to chime in, and, because I know you submitted something to all the members, I'd.
Let's discuss this after your staff report, please.
Okay. Well, my, my staff report is just, just to review the, the current resolution that's before you. This has been something that we've been looking at for the, you know, past several meetings, and we've had, you have basically three options, you know, you can either approve it and as currently submitted, you can make additional language change, you can prove it, approve it conditionally with additional changes, and that, or you can just continue discussion to the following planning commission meeting, but I think that, you know, like I say, the options one and two are probably kind of what you guys were leaning towards the last time, which is, you know, so if we, but I wanted to, but those are the options right now, and like I say, that's, that's all I've got for my staff report.
All right, I'm going to open the conversation up to the, to the board right now, so that we can go ahead and hear, I know Paul did have some things, and I know that you had a couple of things too. So Paul, do you want to go ahead?
My, my only concern is that we've eliminated Class 1 and Class 2 lands, but Class 3 land is available for being able to put these sites on. These sites have been increasing significantly in the past, and because of that, the, the safety factor on these sites has become much better than it was even a year ago. But it's still to the point that we didn't, we have assigned a acreage limit on the solar farms and a distance on the solar farms, but we have not done so on these BESS sites. I'm a little concerned that maybe we should have some sort of site limitation on these, and I wanted to bring this to the board and have the board discuss this and see if it's significant enough for the board to make a decision on, do we need to have a site size limit and a site location adjacent limit? I'll leave this up to you guys to discuss now.
What, what do you mean by site adjacent limit?
There are multiple entities that are interested in BESS right now, and there are multiple entities that are willing to come into these substations and build batteries, energy storage facilities, and I'm not sure we want multiple ownerships adjacent to one another. We have to take into account both the harmony of the rural life, we also have to take into account the housing that's existing around these substations as it is. I realize every landowner has a right, but then we also have a right as a community to make sure that we try to make certain that we have harmony within the rural areas so that we don't overload a particular homeowner or a particular landowner in a particular area around a substation. or a particular landowner in a particular area around a substation. I could foresee, given on some of these substations being in Class 3 and Class 4 land, that we could have multiple BESS owners adjacent to these sites and incorporating as much land as they want to be able to put these BESS sites in. That's my only concern right now, is the fact that we need to look at, for the sake of the homeowners and the landowners out there, what's the harmony that we want for these storage facilities along with the homeowners?
Well, Paul, I thought that we had considered it, and that part of this document puts that oversight into each individual proposal, instead of it being a mandate. Is that not what we had done, Tim?
You are correct, Kathleen.
I know, on site size, that's what we decided.
Based on that individual CUP?
Go ahead.
No, from our discussion last time, we talked about that being based on the individual CUP for every applicant.
And there was also something to the actual power company not being, or having limits to what they could actually allow as well.
The problem with that is on a CUP-by-CUP basis, it could be challenged. And you guys need to be aware of the fact that we may indiscriminately say, you only can do this on five acres. And then on another site, we can say you can do this on 10 acres. And we could then say, well, you have to be 5,000 feet away from the adjacent property owner. On a CUP-by-CUP basis, you're looking at a challenge that I don't think you guys really want to deal with on a CUP basis. I think what you want to do is set this in the ordinance, so that in the ordinance itself, it defines what the basis is for these, so that they're not challenged at the CUP level, in my opinion, or up for discussion.
The only question is, how do we define what those criteria are? You know, with the solar farms, we could set an acreage limit based on the number of panels. With BES systems, they're, they don't cover as much property for the system itself. So, I guess that's a concern. How do we...
It's hard pressed to come up with...
Set up a criteria that meets the technology of the day and what the current request would be.
I'd like to know what Tim has to say.
Well, the only thing that I was going to say is, in situations like this, you would usually include, like, in the regulations, a table that would give like an acreage. And in this case, it would be an acreage based on what surrounding uses there are. So, if the percent of land around a proposed area for this BESS system is primarily residential, you would want to limit it to a very small size or not have it there at all. Or, and it would just start from there and just go work its way down. So, if you have another, you know, if the percentage of adjacent uses or the uses around this particular facility that's being proposed are primarily cropland, then it would be, then you would have it a little bit bigger, you know? I mean, it's, but usually these are, these types of, what Paul's describing are usually addressed in tables. And it's just a matter of figuring out how we want to do that. Do we want to do it like based on acreage per, versus adjacent uses? Would that work? Or, you know, some other thing? I'll let you guys, you know, kind of make up, you know, determine.
I think we could certainly establish a table, but how do we establish the values? How do we say, what should it be for residential? What should it be for agricultural? You know, how do we define those numbers?
Right, and that would be something you'd have to really hammer out and make sure that, you know, it's written in a way that it's fair enough to both the surrounding property owners and the person requesting the conditional use permit.
Do you have any examples of that type thing being done?
I don't have any examples. It's just this is something that has come up because a lot of times we'll have acreage limits in cities. We'll put together in their zoning regulations, limits on like industrial uses for acreages, if, based on what's around it or what adjacent zoning is there. But since this is primarily agricultural zoning, it would be something you would base off of, you know, the percentage. The only thing I can think of is the percentage of use within so many miles or so many feet, so many thousand feet or whatever of the proposed location. And if that percentage of like, let's say residential is higher, then the BESS facility would be a little bit smaller, you know? So, but I just, I don't have any examples specifically for BESS, but I could probably look and investigate for some examples and like other, you know, other uses.
Yeah, I think that would be my biggest concern, is how do we... Are we going about this for the first time? Has someone else established this type of criteria for BESS systems, or is this...
Right, and it is in keeping that philosophy that, and that way of thinking is in keeping with our comp plan. So, we want to stay balanced with, you know, we want to be fair, like I say, with both the applicant and be aware of what the adjacent land uses are.
Keep in mind, we already assigned two home sites to each quarter. And we allow one split for each quarter. So, when you consider the fact that this is a similar situation, put yourself in the shoes of a homeowner, a landowner who has a home that's close to a substation. And we don't put any limits on the encroachment of a BES system within their substation area. You could very easily see that homeowner being surrounded by BESS sites. And that's what I want you guys to be thinking about. You've not, you can't put this on a CUP level without having it being challenged. You have to assign it in the ordinance, so that everybody is playing on the same field and playing by the same rules. And if you're that homeowner out there and you're being surrounded by BESS, what's your opinion of that?
No, I understand exactly what you're saying. I just, I don't think we have enough information to establish those numbers today, at least tonight.
Paul, do you have some kind of a method in mind to do what you've said? What Tim talked about, a table, considering use of land, et cetera?
Well, of course I do, but I was wanting y'all's opinions. I was wanting y'all to discuss this, because I want to see what your ideas are on it. Yes, I do have my opinions, but I'd like to hear other opinions.
Well, I'd like to see what precedent has been set.
Provided y'all, provided Tim quite a bit of information on this, that the size of these are not that large. 10 acres is an extremely large area, but for these BESS. I'm just concerned about the fact that we need to keep in mind that we're dealing with siting in harmony. And we have to put these in harmony with the rural areas. And these rural areas that these substations exist on do have homeowners around there. We have to take into account the harmony of the homeowner's livelihood and not only their livelihood, but also the value of their property. And that's the reason why I want this as a discussion item.
I think it's a valid point. I just don't know how, or how, you know, how do we set a size? How do we...
Give us a starting point to begin that discussion, Paul.
I think either way, we want to see what the definitions are in the table, if we're going to pass that. So, we need to see what it is first, before...
You're going to be building this table, Sean. That's the issue. You're going to have to build this, because you're not going to have anything in writing right now. In essence, I want you guys to put yourself in a rural environment where you've got your house sitting on a corner next to a substation. Let's say you're half mile from a substation. How many of these sites do you want around you? How much, basically, how much buffer do you want away from yourself and away from multiple sites? We have got to look into the future, the fact that this is an up and coming, very rapidly growing system of energy storage. We have multiple methods of energy storage. We have propane sites that store energy. We have gasoline, gas stations that store energy. We have multiple methods of storing energy, but we also have to keep in the harmony of the rural homeowner. And what do we want to be able to go back to that rural homeowner and say, we did our best? We're saying that this is what we feel the chart should look like, so that we can say, we understand energy storage is here to stay. It's going to be an up and coming business. It's working. We just need to be able to assign a limitation around these substations so that we don't inundate a potential homeowner within that area. For example, do you want two BESS sites per substation? For example, do you want to limit the size to 10 acres of BES within a one-mile radius of a substation? Do you want to set a limit as to no more than 1% of the land within the section in which the BESS is, within the substation, is assigned to be used for BESS? Your ideas now.
I guess one thought I have, you know, as we, if we look at setting, you know, say, we'll allow one per substation or two per substation or whatever, if we set that criteria, what's going to prevent that from being overturned later? Because we, a prime example is cell towers. You know, the Federal Telecommunications Act now, we can't say you can't place a tower next to this tower because they're two different companies.
I agree with you, Ken, but we're not there yet.
No, I understand, but what can we do today so that we don't get overturned in five years when that comes out? And they say you have no ability to control that as a planning commission.
Neither one of us can predict the future. All we can do is live with what we've got right now.
How many substations are there in Saline County?
Staff provided us a map of that about five, six months ago.
I can't remember the exact number, but I think it's, I think it's close to five, four or five.
At least it's large enough for a BES.
Kathleen, you asked my opinion. My opinion is to basically keep it at no more than two BESS per substation, not to exceed 10 acres, and with an adjacency of 1,000 feet. But that's arbitrary and up for discussion.
How did you come to that?
Because of the size limitations of the research that I've done on the particular megawatt systems. And in essence, when you look at the number of houses within the substations that we've got in Saline County, I'm trying my best to balance the needs of energy with the needs of a homeowner and landowner.
You could add into, I mean, if the energy storage company owned 100 acres, it would be that way, that... I mean, if you're talking about land ownership and the way the landowner can use their property, if they, that would...
Typically, the way these work, though, is...
That they only buy that part, yes.
Yeah, they only lease that little area.
But, I don't know, 10 acres just seems small, to be honest.
Well, one of the things that, Paul, you gave me an idea, and I'll just throw it out there, is we right now, we have the, you were talking about building rights. You know, one building right for every 80 acres. You have to keep in mind that maybe we go off of, let's say, if someone is wanting a particular site, look at the potential, if there's no built, you know, if there's no houses around, you know, that area yet, would we consider also the potential for residential to be built out, you know, on those, using those building rights? Would we also want to, you know, consider our, you know, our decision, or your decision, rather, based on, would that be a starting point, just to look at the, you know, basing the number of BESS units or the size of the BESS unit acreage based on the number of building rights that are around that area?
I'm going to leave all my comments until after the other members have participated.
But you guys and, you know...
Yeah.
I don't know how we could take potential housing into consideration, because we all know that there are some farmers and landowners who will not ever build, because they continue the tradition of the farming on their land, and they have their house that's there, and that's it. So, how could we measure what's not there?
Well, I mean, if you've got a property that has three building rights, and they only have maybe one house there now, you know, there's a potential there to, you know, have either, you know, an additional house there as well. That increases the density around that area, around that substation, so...
I thought what you maybe were meaning is, how can we take every future possibility into account? I mean, the person who built, when they built Phillip Sliding, they probably didn't take into account if somebody wanted to build a house on the far corner of the next joining 80 or something like that.
They don't even take that into account to build a substation?
No.
That's, you know, of which we have no control over either.
Right.
At least I don't think so. I mean, it's a nice thought, but I don't see how we can make it work.
I don't either.
And we can't operate on what might happen. But we can look at what is there, and how do we look at it?
Don't we have something kind of like that for the, what was it that we just did? The solar arrays? I mean, like Paul was saying, we kind of have a bit of an outline, like you can't have these close to one another. So, we have something...
Right, it's based on the number of panels.
Right, so it's different but similar.
Right.
Okay. I was just trying to see if there's anything that we could pull from you, from that, to apply to this. But I mean, if it's completely different, then there's no use in looking at it, but I was just wondering.
Well, this is a much smaller...
Right, yeah. But I mean, still.
Okay, Paul, what else you got?
No, he's still there.
But he's muted.
Thank you, Kathleen. Appreciate that.
It's the teacher in me, what can I say?
You're doing a great job. That's what I can say. I just want to put you guys in the shoe of a home, in the shoes of a homeowner that is within a half mile of a substation, that's on class three, class four land, that could see in the future, an entire B E S S project from multiple owners being utilized on a particular substation. And how would you feel if we did not assign any limits to that substation? And you were in corp, you were basically surrounded by battery storage systems? That's my only premise. I just want you guys to think about that situation.
Back to us, do you think we would approve that?
Well, Paul's point is that we, we, by not being consistent, we could be challenged, is what he's saying. And this would force us to be consistent, right, Paul? Isn't that what you're saying?
Exactly. That is exactly what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Consistency has to be in the ordinance.
Yes, yeah.
Well, what if we kept it fairly straightforward and just say, maximum of two B E S connections per substation in the county?
This is Dawn. I would agree with that. That was what I was thinking. I liked the idea that Paul had, and I'm glad Paul brought this up, but I think no more than two were substation, or stations, seems reasonable to me. That way, we could add that to the resolution as it stands.
And I struggle with the distance. I understand why we want it. I just don't know what criteria to use as a distance to keep them apart, the two sub, or the two B S S.
I, technically, they would want to be as close to the substation as they could get.
Correct.
Exactly.
And in many cases, it's already occupying 15 or 20 acres.
Yes.
Limiting them to a 10 acre spot next to it seems small.
If we, if we just set it to two, would just the economics of the infrastructure to make it, force them to want to be closer to the substation? To prevent sprawl? Because they have to interconnect with the substation. They have to be part of that system. If they're, you know, a mile away, that infrastructure is going to be a lot more costly. So that, I mean, that's my thought. If we just say two, and then let economics force them to be close to the substation so we're not sprawling all over the place.
Is, I guess, is that enough for us here? Do we?
I don't know. What does everyone else think?
Is there anybody there from any of the companies proposed?
I think they're online. They're on the Zoom call, I think.
Mr. Brady, are you with one of the companies?
He's muted, too.
Yeah, this is Mark Brady. I think Rowan is one of the companies. I'm actually one of the attorneys that's working with, with Rowan and, and his company. So Rowan may have some insight into the economics that you've been discussing here this evening.
Yeah, this is Rowan Mitten from Plus Power. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
Yeah, happy to answer any questions or be helpful in any way I can.
Hello, this is Dawn. How close do you need to be to a station to make it work economically for you? Obviously, obviously, the closer the better, right?
Right, absolutely. You know, not really my area of expertise, but I do know, we were having a discussion just about the cost of transmission lines, and, and you know, even, even extending an extra couple hundred feet can add, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, thousands of dollars or millions of dollars to the cost of a project. So, yeah, you know, once even several parcels over, projects can get prohibitively expensive and more difficult to build because no one wants to look at transmission lines.
So it's not likely you're going to want to put something a half mile away?
Yeah, that, that, you know, just speaking from my personal experience here at Plus Power, that, that would be a, that would end the project. We wouldn't even try to build that project.
And what's your acreage limits?
Are, do you mean for the property that we purchase or for the actual developed area?
The developed, the developed project.
Yeah, sure. I would say typically, you know, 30 acres would be a massive project. 20 acres would be a, that would still be a very large project. That would be larger than most of our projects. So, you know, the one that was proposed a couple of years ago was around 10 to 15.
Correct. Now, would you guys like a 30 acre B E S S system sitting next to you in your house?
Well, if you dropped it right down next to my house with no... Let me start over. If there wasn't already a, pick a number, 20 acre substation sitting there, it would be different than adding 10 acres to a substation for a B E S.
Other opinions? There's more of us on the board than two of us.
Is it feasible to put it, just put in the resolution, no more than 10 acres? And then two, two per substation?
The original was 10 acres, yes.
That's what I was thinking, yeah, that.
I don't.
No, he said 20 acres is large, and 10 to 15 is... Did you say average? For you?
Yeah, I would say capping it at 10 acres, you know, that, that would, that would make it difficult.
But would, would 15 be doable?
I, you know, I'm not an engineer, and we don't have an active application before the commission, so I'm hesitant to say yes, 15 would do.
10 acres is what a lot of these sites are right now.
Yes, they are tending to get larger. I will say that. So I would say 10 acres is the average, you know, two, three, four, five years ago. But, you know, they're trending towards 15, 20 acres.
And keep in mind, Texas has had, ERCOT's got a lot more problems than everybody else does. And so ERCOT's all for building them as big as they can get them. We have to balance the harmony and the siding within Celine County, within a rural county, along with the landowners. And I think now's a good time for you to open it up for public, since we've already, since no one else is discussing this.
We can do that if no one else has any objections. Any from, we'll open it to the public if anyone has any comments.
Are you opening it up for all conversations or just this topic?
Just this top, well.
Just this topic. You're fine.
You're just talking the acreage?
We're talking about the acreage and the two substations per.
Yeah.
Per. So we want some input.
Brooke Swisher, 6398 South Woodward Road. I do know that there are two other landowners right next to Summit Substation that have been offered an amount of money for their acreage. They are one's half a mile off to the east, and the other one is about a quarter of a mile to the north. So it seems to me that they don't care the distance. This other company, I'm not speaking for Plus Power or either of them, but it doesn't seem that the distance is affecting the company that has offered the money.
Teresa Swisher, 4853 East McReynolds Road. I have a problem with having more than one, frankly. The people that are already there, you know, currently homeowners, when they built their house, there was no battery energy storage or any of the, the things that go along with that in, in case something goes bad. I would hate to do two of them to them. One, one is bad enough, as far as I'm concerned. With all the safety things, you know, maybe you make one work, but two is, is not acceptable to me. If you, if you decide to do two, you need to put enough distance between them so that you don't have, you know, you, okay, so, so let's talk about Summit as an example. Summit has a house just right across the road from it. I mean, like, boom, right there. Those people have lived there before this all came about. And now you're talking about putting two around them, they're never going to be able to sell that house. I mean, I, I've done some research on, on people that have homes that solar battery comes in and surrounds them, or there's, there's a couple of battery energy storages around them. They can't sell their house. They lower prices, and they still can't sell them. I would hate to do that to, to anyone like that in the country that, that lives out there because they want the, the peace and the serenity of living in the country. And then you do that to them. I just have a problem with it.
Thank you.
Norman, Rouse, Atlanta. Distance is not a factor. Do you know where the Glendale substation is? It's not in Glendale. I built it back in 1971. I built power lines in Kansas and Colorado. I built substations. So they'll add on. We did. So about harmony, not on the land, but the wildlife, you can have vegetation destruction. Size is an issue, but we extended out. I can tell you this, this club's substations are about 20 miles northwest of here, up on Mankin County. It's the Glendale substation. Ask D S and O. I built it.
Hello, Mark Cicely, 5967 East McReynolds Road, Gypsum, Kansas. As far as, like, you're talking about the site and the number of, I mean, why does it have to be two? Why not just one? But I think that one of the critical things that needs to be considered is if you put in the ordinance to limit the footprint that they can occupy, because why can't you just add on to that one and just keep making that one or those two even bigger than they already are? And you can have that as a stipulation, like, per, you know, when you're trying to consider, you know, alternatives. There's things like what Paul had mentioned as well, too. So per substation, and you said you can't, you don't have any control over when they want to add another substation somewhere? Is that, is that like a, I forget, eminent domain type of thing or something?
The planning and zoning doesn't deal with where the power company is going to put in a substation.
Right, so they can just put them in. Because then if you, if they're adding more, if, you know, more and more, you know, like, energy demands, like, for thinking of future type of situation, then if we said two and they start adding more, then we just got, you know, a whole bunch. So I, my personal recommendation would be one, and then the size, you know, that it would be limited. Otherwise, they just could add on as well, too. And then another, is it the discussion just for the, that limited part or the whole ordinance? That we can?
We're just talking about this right now?
Oh, I understand totally. I'm just asking because I don't want to, there's another part in the wording on the noise. And it said in section 17, 12 dot 17 dot 05, K, number two. And the wording on there said that, let me get that to flip, beyond 100 feet and within the setbacks and screen specifications of the NFPA 855. Is that the National Fire Protection Act? Is that what that is? Okay, thank you. Neighboring properties should experience, should experience no more than 60 decibels during the height of facility operation. Should is really ambiguous in that, you know, so if we could change that wording to make it more definitive and should not experience more than 60 decibels at height of operation, because otherwise, it's kind of hearsay, their, their opinion. It's a should not, you know, type of things, one of those clause things that they kind of get you in a, even a warranty, it seems like. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments for now, for this? All right. That brings it back to us and what we think we should do.
Well, I'll open the discussion, since I have been doing so. And I try to listen to everybody that talks to me. And I would assume that for the harmony within the rural aspect of the county, I think one site of 10 acres should be sufficient for each substation and just limit it at that. I'll open the rest of it up for you. What do y'all think?
Go ahead, Lewis.
Now, I'm going to sound odd, but I think that seems small. Just because in a lot of cases, the substation's bigger. These are fairly innocuous sites. Once they're installed, there's virtually no traffic to and from. In a lot of cases, they're far enough off the road and close enough to the substation, you'll never even notice they're there once they're built. That's, that's probably the big thing that colors the issue is because you're not putting them on a clean piece of ground out in the middle of agriculture. You're already, the site's already encumbered with a substation. So it's, yeah, if we put it up next to my house, I wouldn't like it either. But if there was a 15 acre substation sitting next to my house, I probably wouldn't notice it so much. Probably, life would go on. I, I'm trying to weigh... At some point, something has to be built somewhere. I know it's a hard decision to make. You can't stop all construction of everything everywhere because... Yeah, I personally wouldn't like it if somebody come up and came out and build a residential house within a quarter of a mile of my farm. It kind of. It kind of fits the same category.
If, 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 if I could, I just, just kind of my own experience in working with cities, typically this type of use would be considered industrial type use. And usually what you would do is you would want to make sure that the acreages and that sort of thing would be compatible with the, the area that it's in. So this is, I think that ultimately that's what you have to look at is yes, these are, you know, substations, but in a city, those would be industrial zone. And we don't have an, you know, that type of industrial zoning out in the county like this. It's all ag. And so we have to take into account, you know, the adjacent uses that are like what Paul was saying. And you have to think in those terms.
But that kind of sucks it into an industrial area right there already.
Well, that's, that's the, that's the point is that it is, it is an industrial area, but you have the authority on, under these regulations then to control how much more that becomes industrial versus residential.
What if, what if we look at setting an acreage limit? Number of systems where that's one, two, within, and say that it needs to be adjacent to the substation? So that creates that industrial zone.
The adjacent part certainly sounds nice.
I, I would agree with setting a limit on the number next to, adjacent to the station and limiting the size to maybe twenty acres.
I would agree with that, this song. And here, hearing from the public, I would just now, and certainly appreciate the input from the public. I, I would go back to just the one at this point in time and one per substation and twenty acres.
Keep in mind, twenty acres is a significantly large system.
Well, that's not saying that every proposal would be for that size. But I feel that if we limit it to ten acres, we might be cutting off our own noses to spite ourselves because there is federal oversight coming in on this type of thing.
Keep in mind, I'm sorry, keep in mind also that that could also be a, you know, a, keep in mind a number that you could say a not to exceed number.
Thank you, that's what I was gonna say.
Which goes along with when she was talking about twenty acres. Instead of saying two, two areas, just say twenty acres per station.
Or not to exceed twenty acres.
Right.
Per substation.
Per substation, yes.
And the adjacent part sounds nice.
At least that would keep it close to, to it and.
You say twenty acres adjacent to a substation?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, no.
Twenty acres, not to exceed twenty acres.
Not to exceed twenty acres.
So where are you gonna write that in the guidance, in the ordinance?
Yeah, I think he's making lots of notes right now on where we're gonna put it. I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I think what you guys have come up with is a suitable compromise.
Okay. Got what we need with that for now?
Uh, just to kind of let you all know, I would probably put it under, uh,
Twelve seventeen oh five?
Oh four, yeah, I was gonna say oh four, but oh five too probably.
Oh five has location.
Yeah, yeah, I would put it in oh five, twelve seventeen oh five. I'd put in item three under that. Or excuse me, I would do a, I'd add another letter.
Maybe in between C and D.
Between C and D, yeah.
Or add it as part of C.
Or part of C, yeah.
Of C, okay.
Yeah, system shall be located to, and then add in adjacent to existing substation, not to exceed twenty acres, something like that.
Yeah.
For the project.
Would that also include all the screening and everything needed?
It would be within the project.
Okay, that's why I was asking.
That's part of, that's part of each C U P.
That's true too, how much screening? Okay, any, anything else on that subject? You had a couple of things you were gonna mention before we go on.
Yeah, I just had one, one grammar thing and point K under definitions. It's just a, the standard, should be the standards or this standard. Under NFPA eight fifty-five, third row, third line.
Oh, this standard, okay.
Yeah. Just a grammar thing.
Okay. I'm surprised Kathleen didn't catch it.
Wait, I'm, well, you have to.
She can't see.
I had eye surgery a month ago and I can't see. So you're looking at K?
Yeah, the third line where it says the standard, just a grammar.
Yeah.
I'm looking at a different page. I'm looking at the one that was emailed to me.
I got thirty-seven, page thirty-seven.
Yeah.
You are correct. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
All right, uh, if no one else has any objections, we'll open it to the public for any other comments they have on, on what we have here so far.
I have one more.
Okay.
That should be these standards address, not addresses.
You're right.
Yep.
God, what would we do if you didn't, if you had two good eyes right now?
I know.
All right.
Okay. All right, then back to the, this. All right, we'll open this to the public to have any discussions on this resolution. Please come forward if you have anything and we'll, uh, we'll, uh, keep trying to make it better.
Norman, I'm not a lawyer, but look up the Alfred Comma case. You mentioned Mr. Stromberg English Grammar. That was a far-reaching decision.
For what purpose? Can't hear.
Come back to the, to the speaker, to the microphone, please.
It's commas, semic commas, colas, parentheses, exclamation marks. Have a lawyer look at it. Alfred Comma case.
I'm sure Kenny will.
State my name again?
Please.
Okay, Mark Cicely, five nine six seven, East McReynolds Road, Gypsum, Kansas. I didn't see anywhere in there where it spoke of setbacks from current residents.
I don't think it does. I, I think we, you go ahead, Paul.
The setbacks are set based off of the NFPA and, um, we allowed the national guidance to dictate over this in this ordinance with an exception allowing us to set based off of the C U P to override any national guidance.
So the national guidance currently in that.
Would be the, would be the baseline.
What is that?
Correct.
I'm just curious, what is that?
It's a thousand feet if I'm not mistaken.
Well, that's substantial then. I thought it was like the hundred based on the noise level and stuff like that, so.
No.
That would be the only other exception.
Don't hold me to that because I don't.
So we can, we can make it stricter in the C U P. That way we have a basis in, in that standard all the time.
Okay, yeah, cause I was just wondering with the current proposed site based on the residents that's there and the substation where they would have to put it for that setback to occur on that. Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Helen Chipperfield, five oh six nine, East McReynolds Road, one and a half miles from this site.
We're not talking about a site, ma'am.
No, I'm not gonna talk about the site.
No, no, we're not talking about a site.
I wanna talk to you. Could I talk to you?
You can talk to me.
Okay. A couple of months ago, we were in a meeting and a man came in asking for a, uh, shooting range east of Salina. And it was completely turned down immediately because there was some on your board that didn't approve of it because they live too close and the noise would affect people. If I was sitting in your seat and I didn't let that happen, but I let this happen, I'd have really a bad conscience.
Well, there's not a proposal being approved tonight.
This is only a resolution.
Amazing not, but that's just how I feel.
Yeah.
It, it really, I really appreciate Paul for sticking up for us.
Well, what we're doing here is not approving any application. We're setting a resolution, so if one comes, we have the ability to set some guidelines. Cause right now, if one comes, we don't.
Yeah.
We have no way to address it, say no, yes, no. So without the guidelines in place, we have no way to tell that applicant, you can't do this, you can't do that. This allows us to do that, so that's what we're trying to do.
Well, I hope you consider us.
And that's, that's the purpose, that's why we want to do this.
I was really happy that you didn't pass that other because it would affect you. But it affects us too. Thank you.
Dinette Toon, fifty-three forty, South Maxwell Road, Mentor. I have been out of Kansas for a couple of months. During that time period, I had the opportunity to, um, visit with some folks at a large utility company. And one of the things I asked them, and I don't know them well, um, but I did take some notes and unfortunately I didn't take complete notes, so I'm gonna have to turn it back to you all to maybe do a little homework also. But as I was talking to them about this project, one of the things that they mentioned to me is something that I feel very strongly about mentioning to you all, that there is an executive environmental order from Washington DC that states that you do not have the right to bring BASS to our community as it has the ability to hurt us. We do not have the infrastructure in place to protect us. That infrastructure is the authority having jurisdiction. And the authority having jurisdiction in this area is not trained to protect us at this time. When the authority having jurisdiction has been trained and they are confident in protecting us, that's when this should be revisited in total, including just having this, um, the guidelines in place. So from, from what I am understanding from a federal, state and local level, this really shouldn't go any further until you've had more conversations with all of the authorities having jurisdiction. I know in the Mentor area, those folks have not yet been trained on, um, uh, what it takes to have a BASS in the area. So I would just put that before you all. Again, I don't have the ordinance, I don't have the executive order. I didn't ask that specific question and, and in reflection, I realize I should have, but I would put that to you all to make sure that you've done your due diligence because you do have residents who think, um, very strongly about this particular issue. And there are those of us who, who would seek, um, all resources that we need to do to make sure that we're protected. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
Brooke Swisher.
Hi, this is, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I think.
No, please, go ahead.
Your turn.
Sixty-three ninety-eight South Woodward Road, same as last time. A neighbor in our area has some questions. He's not, wasn't able to make it tonight. Um, he is working and I'd like to ask them, and it's specific, not specific to anything, the, like, plus power. If a company goes bankrupt, are they still on the hook for decommissioning and liability insurance? Once these subsidies run out, it seems to me that companies have an easy button to push, go bankrupt. So are they still on the hook even after they, and if they declare bankruptcy? What is the hazard ra, radius of a facility should it catch fire? Are the local fire, fire departments equipped with, with and trained to deal with said fire? Most are volunteers. Furthermore, I don't think these fires can be put out easily or at all. And then the third one, have any of these companies laid out the risks, risks involved? We know the benefits, but have they addressed risks? If so, how? So have you guys looked at any of the risks involved, um, with neighbors, other companies, other states, that type of thing? And my question, if we pass this resolution, will planning and zoning or the county be able to enforce the resolution requirements and hold the companies accountable?
Yes. This, the, the commission would not put anything in there that we, could not be enforced in some form or fashion.
Okay. That's all I got.
This is Dawn. There is a bond requirement. Under, remember, way, way towards the back of the resolution, the applicant shall post a bond with Sling County Clerk, establish an escrow counter, provide other financial security deemed accessible by the county in an amount equal to the estimated decommissioning costs to ensure proper decommission and reclamation. So I think that kind of covers any issues with, with bankruptcy or, or whatever it might happen with the company, the way I read it.
That's what I thought too.
My understanding.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm sorry, I can't see the podium and I apologize again for, for cutting you off there. This is Rowan Mitten from Plus Power again. I just wanted to clarify exactly, um, the acreage cap that you guys discussed. You, um, you talked about ten acres, you talked about twenty acres, and then you talked about limiting, limiting it to, uh, certain numbers of sites per substation.
That's correct, we did that.
Right, so did you land on a specific acreage?
We were working on, at twenty acres.
Not to exceed twenty acres adjacent to a substation.
Okay, great, uh, thank you.
Go ahead, your turn.
So to finish that, did you guys make a decision on whether you're gonna allow one or two?
We said one.
It's one.
One, I missed that part, I, I just need the clarification. Okay, um, so in addition to the rules and regs that we have now, we, you guys patterned the regs off of the Department of Energy, NFPA, Clean Energies Regulations. They, they both had, or DOE and NF, and Clean Energy had checklists. So what about adding a statement that says, "All Department of Energy and NFPA and Clean Energy Regulations as they currently are and as they put out updated rules and regulations shall be part of this regulation for battery energy storage. All updates shall be..." All updates shall be part of this and shall be adhered to within 12 months from the regulation date. No items will be grandfathered in." Your thoughts? That, that takes in, there, there are parts of the checklist that we didn't pick up, and I know we picked up a lot, but there's still items that I feel like we didn't pick up, and this would encompass them.
Teresa, the problem with setting it within a 12-month timeframe is, once those national guidance are updated and published, they're not going to wait on your 12-month. They have to submit and apply based off of those guidance documents nationally as they are written, at the time they are written, not 12 months later.
No.
And, go ahead.
No, go ahead, sorry.
And so I, I really don't want to put a, a fudge factor time limit on something like that. I would just assume, keep it at the fact that we are using national guidance that they have to follow, and whenever that national guidance is printed and published, that's the guidance that will be followed.
Okay, we did not specifically say that they would have to follow all NFPA or all Department of Energy reg, regulations and, and recommendations or Clean Energy, and that's what I'm trying to get, is that we have all of them. And I, the 12 months, Paul, was just so that we gave them a timeframe that if, if they come out and they say, okay, you have to have green lights on your, your alarms, that they have 12 months to get the green alarm, green lights put in. That's all I was trying to get done.
We've said that NFPA standards are in force, so whatever the standards are becomes that force.
Well, you said NFPA 855, and you have a few specific ones, but NFPA is far larger than that.
But we are dealing solely with the BESS system, and those guidance documents that we've got assigned in this document are those associated strictly with BESS.
Okay, there's a few more that, that we do not have that are associated with BESS, and I didn't write them down because this is what I had to propose. I can, I can go through and add them, or, or get them to you, that information.
I'm personally, I'm satisfied with what we've got.
Yeah.
But I'm always willing to listen, as you, as you already know.
If there's something that 855 does not reference that's in the NFPA, we think is applicable, you know, we're open to see that, but we need to see that text, so we know what to look at.
You want specifics, you're not willing to add all of this. Is that what you're telling me?
No.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I don't, we're not saying NFPA, all of NFPA.
Right.
We're saying 855, but 855 will reference other standards.
Right.
But if there's something that isn't in there that we need, then we probably need to address that, but.
Okay.
As of right now, no one's brought us any evidence, or we haven't found anything that isn't addressed here.
Well, we, we have, but they, you didn't add them. There's, there's, one moment. Sorry, I'm going to go over my five minutes. I, so I guess you'll just have to cut me off and send me home.
I don't think we're going to do that to you tonight.
Thank you, appreciate that.
We're all trying to figure this out, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and you've been a great resource, and we can't thank you enough.
I appreciate that.
We would have to.
Okay, so, we, did, did we add NFPA 70?
Yes, we got that one there.
And how about UL 9540A, which is a test method for evaluating thermal runaway, fire propagation in battery energy systems. I don't think that one did get entered.
UL 9540?
9540A. Is it in there? Okay.
No, it's not.
Eight?
9540, not 9540A.
A is a subchapter of 9540.
Okay, so you're okay with, okay, I'm all right, I'm all right with that. Okay, there is a, as far as safety goes, obviously, that's, that is my main concern. And I had sent to Tim on September 25th, safety, which is Department of Energy, BESS safety, and it did, it did not get added. And I know, Paul, you and I talked about this, but it specifically talks about the data acquisition, monitoring, alarm system, and, and that you need visual and audible alarms if potential safety hazards happen, full monitoring of electrical power, notification of when preventative maintenance is needed, system-level alerts should be provided by the manufacturer over customer interface. That was just one of the items in that safety part from the Department of Energy.
Are any of those not addressed in NFPA 68 or 69?
No. You guys touch on safety, but you don't go into the depth that I feel like it needs to be. I mean, you need to have visual and audible alarms. I mean, how am I going to know? Is somebody going to run up and down the, the road, you know, saying there's a problem here? I mean, that, that, that's my, ultimately, that is my concern. How am I going to know when there's a problem? And, and this, this paragraph here will cover it.
Can we refer it back to a national standard, though, so then?
It is, that is part, that's part of the.
What is, what standard?
It's the.
UL 9540.
Which we have.
Which we have.
That, that's in 9540? Paul, are you sure?
I just read it.
I think, okay. All right, I stand corrected, my apologies. I'll, I'll double-check that, Paul, because I didn't see it.
Please do.
Pardon?
Please do.
I will, you know.
I know, but I'm not being facetious, I'm being serious.
No, we won't make you miraculous.
Yeah, and, and I will, for sure.
We, we don't want to overlook safety, we don't want to overlook anything because these are the guidelines we have to live by.
Right, and you have to live with the rest of us if something does happen.
Some of us live close to the.
I say, you're fairly close, aren't you?
Yeah, I can see it from my house.
Yeah, yeah. You guys touched on the multiple.
Teresa, let me stop you for just a minute.
Yes.
UL 9540.
Yep.
The document incorporates ESS equipment for control, protection, power conversion, communication, fire detection, and suppression. It also goes on to talk about verifying that the energy storage system, such as the batteries and related equipment, meet the safety standards to prevent the hazards related to electrical, mechanical, and environmental conditions. So, that identifies the fire detection systems that are supposed to be used and the methods of suppression. The only thing that you're looking for in addition to this is some sort of signal identifying a failure. Is that correct?
You're pretty close, yep.
Thank you.
So can we add just, just that information, that visual, visual and audible alarms if potential safety hazard exists?
I will read UL 9540 and see if that's in there. If it is, we'll add that as part of the paragraph.
Okay, sounds good.
National fire alarm and signaling codes.
Yeah, because we have NFPA 72.
Yeah, you've got 9540 in there.
We've also got NFPA 72, which is.
It's standards of government installation, maintenance, and safety of fire alarm and emergency, emergency communication systems.
Does it go specifically to alarms and whatnot?
It's 464 pages in that NFPA 72.
I'm kidding, okay.
I would think that it would.
It probably does, then, okay. So, so, so that you guys will make for sure that there's alarms and whatnot. Okay. The other thing I had was a concern that if the company has any foreign ownership, I would like to see you add something about all companies and subsidiaries filing for BESS must prove ownership prior to CUP approval. Under no circumstance do we allow a company with any foreign ownership to put BESS in our county. This negates local, state, and federal regs.
The only issue that I would bring up with that is that if you do that, that would be considered, because we have foreign companies already in Saline County, I believe. And so, by doing that, you would be opening the door to challenge as an arbitrary and capricious type of condition that you would put on that, so.
So, so, so my, my concern is, how enforceable are our laws, are the regs you're, you're putting together now, if they have foreign ownership? I think that's something we need to look at.
Well, they, they, the foreign ownership, my understanding is that they, if they're under the, if they're in this country, they have to abide by whatever our standards are.
Okay. Do you know where that, where I could find that?
I don't know, but I know that you can probably consult with the, probably the Interstate Commerce Commission or somebody like that.
Okay, sounds good. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa.
Hello, hello. I'm Carolyn Sichely, 5967 East McReynolds Road, and I just want to express my concern, very similar to what has already been articulated about, just first and foremost, I guess it would be the safety, as Teresa just mentioned, but a very close second would be the harmony of the land, as has always been, as already has been mentioned. 20 acres seems like a very large plot for these farms. It was also mentioned that, that there's already a power station there, but adding 20 acres to that just seems like another pile of metal. Things that I don't want to have to look at as I'm driving by. And furthermore, you know, the larger acreage creates more issues for a potential safety hazard. You know, if we, if we limited it to, say, 10 acres, like you're cutting your fire hazard, you know, risk in half, and, you know, something definitely to consider when that's, when safety is obviously a, a huge concern for us in the, in the area. It was mentioned in passing, I think, that, you know, nobody wants to look at transmission lines, and that's very true for us, not really wanting to look at 20 acres of, I mean, I don't know if you guys know what these look like, but I'm sure you've researched photos, and they're not pretty, for those of us who just really enjoy the natural landscape of rural Kansas. I was born and raised here, I moved away, and I moved back because that's what I love. You know, I want to look at the sunset with an uninhibited view, and I realize the power lines there, or the, the power plants there, but if we use the excuse, if we're just going to continue to add on to that, I feel like that's not really considering the harmony of the land. And furthermore, there's obviously building permits put into place, as has been mentioned as well, and those are put into place for several reasons. One, I believe, would be aesthetics. I mean, we are trying to preserve the agriculture of the area, so the more homes, you know, takes away from the land being used for agriculture. So I feel like this would be very similar to 50 homes, you know, because it's literally creating impact that, you know, will definitely affect the land and, and those of us who live there, so thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had one other typo.
Come on up. If it's a typo, you know, we want to hear about it.
So on your 121705F, mine had all, a bunch of underscores that should probably not have.
What page is it in?
I have 41.
Oh, I'll just take that underline.
Yeah, yeah, that's all I had.
And one last thing on the, the sound, especially going from 10 to 20, I think the proposed energy company said 10 to 15 was their largest sites they had, so now 20. Any company, I would be the same way. If you give me 20 acres, I'm going to take that 20 acres, so I'm going to double the impact and the noise and everything like that. So going back to that 17, 121705K, where it said should not, I think that, you know, you're, you're talking about grammar and everything like that, of, of things that should be very explicit that it should not exceed. Now, all of a sudden, you go from 10 acres for a normal large site that they've already said that they have, and now they have 20 acres to do that on, you're doubling that sound as well, too.
What page is that on, 12170?
05. And it's in K, and the last sentence of K says that it should not, or it should, I guess I could read it again. But in reading it, it is very. Says setbacks and screenings, neighboring properties should experience no more than 60 decibels. So it's kind of like, well, you shouldn't be bothered by this, you know, but instead of saying explicitly that neighboring properties, you know, beyond 100 feet will not, or should not.
If we change it to shall, shall.
That's good. Yeah, just, you, you understand what my point is in the verbiage of that. So there's not ambiguity in that, and it does set that limit, especially if we're going to do a larger site, that sound is just going to go up from there as well, too, in effect, multiple areas, you know, farther, farther in range, so, thanks.
You need me to put that in there, that change?
Shall not experience more than 60 decibels.
You're looking at, at page 43K, noise, correct?
Yeah.
It's already been changed to shall.
No, there's a second should below.
There's a second should.
Second to the last line.
Last line, yeah.
Oh, shall experience.
It's all about the grammar and consistency. All right, anybody have anything else? Then I'll bring it back to the board to see if we have anything else we need to add to it. Paul, you have anything?
I do.
Oh, I'm sorry, got one more. Go, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Jake Riffle, 4430 East Farley Road. You know, we're, we're struggling to figure this out. There's a lot of factors to it. It's a difficult thing to, to figure out what we're trying to do here. There's obviously a huge safety concern, or else everybody wouldn't be here, and they wouldn't have been here a year ago. It's emerging technology, it's real, still fairly young. There are some successful implementations, but there are some very graphic and, and really painful, you know, examples out there, hundreds of examples out there, or dozens at least, of examples where things go really horribly wrong. I would suggest, rather than trying to figure out what this resolution looks like, maybe we put some type of moratorium on, on allowing these in Saline County for some period of time, while we gather more data, while the rest of the country catches up, you know, while the designs get better, while we test, and we know the real risks. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Paul, now it's.
Thank you.
Back to us.
Okay, you guys all know that my mantra is, I don't want a decision, I want an informed decision, and I have done my due diligence to try to give you guys as much information as possible to make an informed decision on this. We've written a document that pretty well covers almost every aspect of safety that I've been able to uncover. I disagree with the 20 acres, I think we should limit it to 10 acres, but that's the decision of the board, and I will accept it. A few things that I want to point out, there has been a significant increase in the number of BESS systems within specifically California and Texas. The failure rate of these systems has dramatically decreased, partly because of the fact of the chemistry of the batteries that are being used. The chemistry of the lithium batteries that are being used are not the same as what you find in the Tesla or the e-bikes or anything else that everybody's. find in the Tesla, or the e-bikes, or anything else that everybody says they're explosive and they catch fire. If you look at the data on these particular systems, there are very few internal thermal runaway failures on the systems right now. I think, don't quote me on this, but it was in the tens based off of the thousands of sites that are out there. So the safety, to me, isn't a big enough issue. A case in point, there is a BESS system in downtown Minneapolis, Kansas, and that system was there two years... Put in two years ago. In a recent opportunity that I had to give a talk up there, I talked to several people about that particular BESS system that's downtown Minneapolis, and there was not a single person in the least bit interested in discussing the safety issue of that. They had no qualms about that particular site. So I hope that people realize that these are not going to just explode on... Because they're a battery system. The technology is different, the technology is also increasing as far as the ability to monitor each individual battery, and if that battery happens to start a thermal overload, it can be shut down and removed before there is a thermal runaway. You are correct, if there is a thermal runaway, there is no firefighting capability. It basically burns itself out until it's contained within itself. So, yeah, the same... I had a comment or made discussion with somebody who was very adamant about the fact that they did not want these because they said they'd blow up. And I said, "Well, you know, keep in mind, this is a storage system, an energy storage system, and a propane tank sitting in downtown Salina, Kansas, is an energy storage system that could blow up. A gasoline tank is also an energy storage system that can blow up." I say all of this because I want you to be aware that I want you to make an informed decision. We have done due diligence in writing this document to make sure that we have covered every aspect about BESS that we can. If you can't... I can't argue with you if you don't know the facts of what we wrote in this document. I can do my best to educate you on what we've done. We've done a pretty good job of making sure that we cover all of this, and we have been trying to use national guidance, so that the national guidance overrules anything that we might inadvertently put in there that would give them an escape clause. So that's one of the reasons why we focused on this. I'm more concerned about the siting and the harmony. We have... These sites will be right next to a substation. We only have a few substations in the county. I would prefer to have just one site per substation, and if it sounds like that's what the board agrees on, I would prefer 10 acres not to exceed, not 10 acres on a project, but if the board says 20 acres, that's fine with me. 10 acres is a very substantial size for a national grid system. ERCOT, and for those of you who do not know what ERCOT is, that is the Texas Grid, and if you are familiar with the Texas Grid, they have failed miserably due to excessive heat and excessive cold in the last few years. They have put a massive influx of battery storage systems to be able to handle that 3 o'clock to 7 o'clock timeframe, where the energy demand is the highest. This is a very lucrative business model. You buy low and you sell high, and that's essentially all they're doing, is they're buying the energy at 1:00 and 2:00 in the morning, and they're selling it at 4:00, 5:00, and 6:00 in the afternoon when it's high, and they're making a killing off of this. And I hope every landowner that gets an offer for a lease quadruples that price and sends it back as their offer, and that goes with anything that's energy-related in Saline County and cell tower-related. These people, these businesses are not doing this for the benefit of the Saline County residents, and so therefore, I think every Saline County resident whose approach should make sure that they are getting their value out of that piece of land that is going to be used. But I hope my... I'm doing my best to reassure you that these systems are safe, as safe as a propane tank sitting out there, as safe as a gasoline sitting out there, as safe as a transmission line, as safe as a substation sitting there, because a substation is also a storage facility, too. So we have to... And you've heard me say this time and time again, my mantra is harmony and siting. We have to deal with the siting and the harmony. The federal energy regulation is going to be even more demanding upon this system for their regulations than what we can provide. All we have to do is make sure that if we're allowing this facility to be in Saline County and it meets our siting and our harmony regulations, so that we can live and coexist in the county. We've set the limit that they cannot put these on Class 1 and Class 2 lands. Most of our infrastructure for substations are on Class 3 lands, so you're going to see these being put on these substations, unfortunately. My opinion, I'd like to make it not allowed on prime farmland, but that's because I'm a soil scientist, and I have a strong feeling about people taking out prime farmland for housing and for infrastructure use. I'd like to be able to have food instead of energy, if I'm looking at my priorities. So I hope, and I'm sure I'm going to get a lot of calls, more calls, and more texts on this, but I hope that I can at least reassure you that we have done a good job in writing this up. Feel free to download this document and read it, and if there is anything in that document that you don't like, bring it to us, let us know. Teresa has done a fabulous job being a partner with us and getting this thing written, and I greatly appreciate working with her on getting this document written, and that's all I've got.
Anyone, anything else? Staff, you have updates?
Okay, your options would be to either direct staff to go ahead and make the corrections that were outlined tonight, and either bring it back to you or at the next Planning Commission meetings, which I don't believe is going to be in December. It'll be the January meeting, or you can just, like I say, you can, like I say, table it, or you can direct staff to go ahead and make the changes now, and then just send it on, and what I would do is send it on to the County Commission in January sometime also, if that's the route that you want to go. But what I would do is, before I did that, I would make the changes and then show you all, I'd email it to you, let you look it over, make sure that everything is to your liking, and then I would make it available for download for the public. I wanted to just make sure that, based on what we've discussed tonight. So there's two, basically two options, or three options, if you want to, if you can just say, we can keep discussing it at the next Planning Commission meeting, but either, you know, just have me make the changes, and we can discuss those changes again at the next Planning Commission meeting, or I can just go ahead and make the changes and forward it on to the County Commissioners in January as well.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
You need to...
I'll entertain a motion, how's that?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we direct staff to apply the changes that we discussed tonight, and one for the review follows, once that's complete, to forward to the County Commission for their approval.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Hopefully, we can take care of that, and it'll be to the County Commissioners in January.
Yeah, and what I, like I said, I'll make the changes, I'll send it to you all to look it over to make sure that it reflects what you guys were wanting to do this evening, and then I, if it's okay, then I'll go ahead and download it for the public to see.
All right, the last thing on the agenda is staff announcements.
Just no Planning Commission in December, no applications have been submitted, so...
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I move adjourn.
You don't even have to do that, or adjourn.